Salary and we were, the billing was off by $493. So, there's no extra money in this account to move it, so therefore, we just are asking from contingency to cover.
I move to approve a transfer in the amount of $493 from account 01-01-120-200-500, contingency to account 01-25-226-100-215, fees, ACO, due to differences in budget estimates and actual costs, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
Motion is made, is our second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hardy, any discussion? All those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Historic Preservation Grant. This is an annual grant that comes to us to help the historical preservation of land records through the Town Clerk's Office. And we've done this for many years. I think the number may have been a little bit higher in past years, but it's $5,000 that will help to lessen the wear and tear on books and, you know, also some other efficiencies.
I move the following, be it resolved that Paul M. Formica, First Selectman, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality, a contract with the Connecticut State Library for an Historic Documents Preservation Grant.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, my hearing must be low on that side. Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, we're on a roll now.
Unfinished business, a continued discussion on a business entity, you wanted this back on this?
Yes.
Did you get a chance to?
I have spoken with the assessor by phone, but unfortunately, we haven't been able to get our schedules to mesh. I hope to meet with her next week, but in the meantime, I think that most of the things that I was looking for, we will be able to do. And at the next meeting, I hope to have some printouts that you can look at, and we can discuss at that point whether we think this fulfills a need that would be helpful to both businesses and individuals that might have an interest.
Okay. So, do you want this on the next?
Please.
Carry this forward?
Please.
Karen, please, on the next item. Our next item is Ex officio reports. If I can just mention, you had asked for a quick update on the water and sewer.
Yes.
Did you get it in your packet, the water and sewer?
I got, we all got it in our.
We all got it in the packet, okay. So, Joe was here.
At the meeting before.
Huh?
At the meeting before.
Oh, the meeting before, okay. Does everyone have a copy of that? Water and sewer?
I didn't bring it.
Okay, so Joe has copies here.
I didn't bring it because it wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't know if something had come up that we were not able to discuss.
No, 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 I was going to discuss it under my report as the Chairman of the Water and Sewer.
So, I didn't bring it and I didn't, I didn't prepare questions because it wasn't on the budget.
So, if you would like, Joe can provide us with copies and we can just go over it quickly.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you had to come back for a second meeting. I know you were here at the last meeting.
One of the things that we've been able to do, I don't know what I have, I'll take this one. With this water and, you have, is this just water or is this?
It's salt.
Okay, water and sewer, so we'll start, we have water on top. One of the things that Joe has been able to do, he has some great strengths with regard to budgeting, and we've expanded the line items throughout the water and sewer budget in an effort to really identify the costs. And you'll see those line items, and Joe will talk about, there is a list of expenditures and a list of revenues. One of the things you'll notice is we don't know exactly what we're going to do in terms of any rate increase, so what we're calling it is a revenue required, because the rate increase is going to be a function of increased flow over the summer, and then, as we approach the November billing cycle, we'll determine what the increased flow is, and then, anything that is short of the rate, of the revenue required, will be made up with a rate increase. So, for example, we need a 5.4% increase in revenues, any combination of that in terms of flow and rate increase would be what we're doing. So, I'll let Joe give a presentation over, he's very versed at it, but I just wanted to.
Before we get to that, in response to that comment, I have had some calls, people concerned about rate increases and how much advance notice they would have in order to pay those bills.
We have, when I got here, there has been a history of not having a rate increase for a number of years, so we had to play catch-up, and so there was a couple of large rate increases five or six years ago. We've gone on incremental, smaller rate increases over the years. There's always been notification of a public hearing, there's been an opportunity for people to come out and talk about a public hearing, and then it's set. So, there's usually a 30 or 60 day period, depending on the notification of the water and sewer meeting, and then the budget hearing, I'm sorry, the public hearing, and then the effect.
I think some, some people are concerned that the increase might be quite sizable through some stories that have gone through town.
Well.
And are worried about having just 30 days to pay the bill, and obviously, these are some older people in particular. So, that was the reason for my question is, with rate increases, you know, do they normally have a 90 day notice period before they have to pay?
Yeah, I don't know that it'd be a 90 day notice period, but it would be some notice period, and that's why we're providing good information tonight with Joe to talk about the percentages. And the fact is, water and wastewater are becoming more expensive to operate.
Yes.
Our facilities are becoming older and more expensive to maintain, so we're taking a series of proactive approach in terms of, we did in fact hire for the Sewer Department a mechanic to come in. He's already saving money off the salary that we provided him, because we're doing preemptive maintenance on a lot of these things, instead of bringing in contractors after an event explodes and paying the big numbers. So, so we're looking at that, I think Joe's got a good handle on it, and, but this, we think, is the best way going forward. There has been a lot of discussion on water and sewer budgets, we do have some misinformation going out there, but this is why we provided it at the town meeting, and we'll have Joe and the Water and Sewer Commission has talked about it in depth as well. So, you want to give a brief overview of?
Yeah, I can give a highlight. And I certainly would, don't want to increase any of these budgets either, because, I mean, I look at these things as an employee, but I'm also a customer of this system, so looking at, we, I did a detailed analysis, spent, looked at, I'm giving you guys this sheets, but I had bigger 11 by 17 sheets that looked at the actual expense fiscal year 2010, 11, 11-12, 12-13, 13-14, and projected, so it was a lot of analysis of every single bit of money that was spent in these two departments, well, Water and Sewer Department, over the last four years. In the package that you have there, there is just pretty much the executive summary with the revenues and the expenditures. Starting off on the water, water department side, the first sheet is the revenues, and as Mr. Formica had said, you know, there's, there's a certain amount of revenue in the, in some of the line items below, but the main one is the metered water service. So, we tried to set as best we can all the other revenues, and I know what, and we'll get into the expenditures in a second, so the, the bottom line is what the expenditures are, the other revenues, and then whatever makes it up is the required revenue, and that is either going to be an increase of flow or a rate increase. So, if you get into the meat and potatoes, which is the expenditure side, that budget, the adopted budget in this current fiscal year, fiscal year 13-14, is 2.356 million, if I'm reading that correctly. And going through each line, line by line, the total line comes in at $2.52 million, which is a $163,000 increase from this current fiscal year. When I was doing a look at some of these lines, and it's ironic that we just spent some time with the Connecticut Clean Energy people about energy efficiencies, one thing I looked, I mean, if you look in here is electricity and fuels, that's, that was one of the big items, and that was, I'm proposing that to be $24,000 more than, in the current budget, because that's where we're tracking. That's what this, to run this department takes, so I wanted to provide a realistic budget that actually has, now, what we like to do, and as Mr. Formica also mentioned, we have a new mechanic, is that person is making a difference in trying to not only do the preventive maintenance, but I've already reached out to some vendors to try to look at ways to be more energy efficient, to save monies, but this is a big system, we have a lot of wealth, you know, I, we have it all detailed of every single of our wells, how much energy they use, all the booster pump stations, so there's a lot of cost in there, but I was trying to project a realistic budget. I'm not doing anyone any services by putting in numbers that they'd like to see, but that's not what it costs to run the, run the business side here. So, with that being said, on the water side, it's about a $24,000 increase that we're proposing on electricity and fuels. I mean, we were, the town was fortunate in our fuel contract, with, you know, our trucks are running around trying to service these things. I believe the unleaded gas, we've been going off a fuel contract for, for two years now, and that's coming due, and it's, we're going to have a new fuel contract coming into the new year. It was like $2.02 for unleaded and $2.82 for diesel. Well, I'd love to have that now, but we've locked in for rates that aren't as good as that, but they're certainly better. I mean, people are paying $4 at the pump right now. So, there was 24,000 increase in electricity and fuels, there was, there's 20,000 for the, to split the mechanic, there was other, like, almost 35,000. The, the system is getting older, and its system is complicated, you have all these wells, and we had, you know, maybe a few thousand to maintain wells and different items, so we had to put where we need to maintain the system. So, in totaling these items, I, there was about 100,000 in electricity, fuels, the mechanic, and increased maintenance costs, which is two-thirds of any of the increase. So, that's pretty much, if I can get into sewer side, but that's pretty much summarizes the, the water department side.
How about if we just ask for a quick?
Oh, do you have any questions on the water side?
Water, and then we'll just hit the sewer and then go back if you want, or if you have specific questions with regard to water?
As new businesses and developments come online, particularly larger developments.
Yes.
Are they going to be required to have meters that are the smart meters?
That's what we're doing now. That's correct.
And that, that will be a requirement?
That will be a requirement, and we're actually trying to go in that direction with all the other meters too. That's a different program, but that will certainly help this, this department better track, keep better track of the water.
And is that what we're seeing here in about the fourth line down that says new meters? Is that what we're seeing there, is replacement of existing meters? Or is it actually new, previously non-existing ones?
I believe that's partially of replacing, but partially of new meters, because with the new Gateway and some of those other projects, we still have to purchase the meters, there's an offsetting revenue that comes back for them, but we still have to purchase the cost of putting the meters in.
And so, do we have, considering, of course, I'm talking about the two larger project, projects that are coming online.
Correct.
Gateway and then the apartments.
Yep.
Now, we have the smart meters, do we have the ability now to do the drive-by of the reading of the smart meters, or are they still going to have to be read by?
We don't have the drive-by capabilities right now, but we're heading in that direction, and that's one of the projects we're going to be working on.
We are, just so you know, with the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, we are one of the priorities for that, to get some money at 2% to replace all of the meters, to make them radioactive. There is a cell tower going up as part of Dicky Morris's $45,000 event that we approved last year, that will be able to help facilitate the reading of those meters. We think that when we get those meters, it will show an increase in flow as a result of capturing the new meters, capturing some of the flow that's lost, and also the efficiency in terms of labor, being able to read it without doing it. So, until we get that whole system done, the meters that we replace will have the capability of being read, but then, a year or so down the road, when all the other meters are replaced, and we have the electronics system in place to do so, then they'll be able to be read. But, the other part of that question is that there are always meters that go bad, there are always meters that need to be replaced, and that's what that line item also represents.
Okay. So, these new developments, they're going to pay just the basic cost of the meter, and the rate payer is going to have to pay for the equipment that would, that would enable the drive-by reading of the meters.
We have set rates for what the meters cost, so I think, hopefully that answers your question. It's a specific rate that we have, that we charge when people are, it's a deposit for when they have the meter. We would have to change those rates if we want to.
We own the meters, we get a deposit on the meters from everybody, so the system that would be in place will be part of that loan that we'll get from the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, that will include meters for every residential person, and also the ability to have the computer to read it, either in, you put it in a van and you drive down the street and you pick it up, or you sit in Brad's office and you're able to pick it up, depending on the level.
Thank you.
Any other questions on water?
No.
You want to go to sewer?
Yeah, sewer is a little more challenging one, and when I, it's in the package here. The revenues, just to explain, there's two, there's two big revenue sources, metered water service, they call it, and I have it in parentheses, the Prisons Correctional Institute down by Bribrook, and then metered water sewer service is everyone else. So, we tried to, those two are separate lines, so again, it's proposed required revenue, and then, there's not a lot of other revenue except for the operating transfers in. Some of the activities from the water department, the wells or flushing, has to go into sewer system, that's what the operating transfers in. So, Brad was able to tell me we should have a slight increase, but everything else is pretty much born on those other two main lines. But when you get to the expenditure side of the, of the discussion, the sewer side, the sewer budget in this current fiscal year was 1.752 million dollars. The proposed budget that I'm presenting, or presented to the Water and Sewer Commission I'm showing you now, is 1.942 million, for an increase of 190,000 or 10.8%. Now, it is an alarming increase, it seems, however, the biggest chunk of this money, if you go to the, one, two, three, four, the fifth line in this expenditure report is called Treatment Plant and System Fees. And if you look at this, go across in this, in the chart here, in the actual expense in fiscal year 2010, 11, that expense was 631, $631,000. In 11-12 was 871,000, in 12-13 it was 918,000, and we budgeted 700,000. And this line has been tracking about 200,000 in the red for the last four years, and if we keep doing that, we will continue to be in the red in this department, and we can't do that. That's not, it's, it's a, it's a cost of going to the Treatment Plant in New London that we don't have a lot of control. We do have a little bit of things that we can do to improve it, and I want to get into that, but it comes at a cost. So, we're proposing a line of 800,000, which is 100,000, of the 190,000 dollar increase in the sewer budget, 100,000 of that is just to play catch-up on, on the Treatment Plant costs. So, that's 100,000. We're trying to be proactive, one of the things, if you go in the next line, I'm sorry, it's the third line from the bottom, infiltration and inflow improvements. When you have these old manholes, there's water, sometimes they get holes in them, it's in things like this, they just get old, the joints break out, and groundwater just pours into them, and we don't know unless we go out and start looking at these things. Well, because we've had so many maintenance issues with the sewer system, because it's getting older, and we didn't have a mechanic before, we haven't had the time to put our manpower to check these manholes, because once you look down them, you can see the water pouring into them.
And the effect, the effect of the water pouring into the manholes is that it runs through the sewer pipes, and it's counted as, it's billed against these.
It's an expense and not a revenue. It's going to New London, and we're not getting anything for it. So, good examples, we just found one when we were tied into Gateway, that people, when they're driving up 161, just north of 95, might have seen that there was some work being done out there, there's a manhole there. Well, it was pouring in water into it, so we spent about $2,000 to get that repaired, and Brad estimates that's going to save about $10,000 to plant from the water, because it's pouring in every day of the year, 365 days a year, and we're paying for that. So, we're trying to use the foresight of putting an infiltration inflow line of $15,000 that's never been put into this budget before. We're gauging that for every dollar you spend on this, you're going to save four to five dollars at the plant. So, it's, it's, it's good foresight to try to reduce costs. We have the same challenges on, we have older equipment, it's not functioning and highly efficient because it hasn't been maintained. So, we have a mechanic now, it's split 50-50, there's a cost for here, but he's, you know, what an example, and he, he went out there, he doesn't really have many tools really to work in right now, because we're, we're trying to finish up the year and watch our budgets, but he does have some things, and when he went out there, he was trying to take a look at one of the generators, and he saw that the fan was about to come off. Now, if no one did anything, that fan was going to go through the radiator and cost $5,000 to repair, and he was able to, it was a few hundred dollar repair. So, these are the kind of things he's already doing that's going to help us save money. But between the 100,000 and the treatment costs, we've had some increase in legal costs, we've had some, we've had some court cases, Landmark being one of them, that, you know, we're doing what we had to do as a department, that's an increased cost, the infiltrate, inflow and infiltration's 15,000, the fuel.
I just want to, I just want to interrupt, just while we're on the, the maintenance of, of the Treatment Plant fees and the difference in the discrepancy of the budget and amount versus what, what we were billed, that is billed kind of in arrears, almost like when you have a worker's comp, you estimate your payroll, and then, at the end of the year, the company comes back in and audits what you're doing, and says you used this number of dollars, so therefore, the fee is up or down depending on, and that's what happened here. The New London came back and sent us estimated dollars, and then came back based on flow, and this is the difference. And so, that's why we under-budgeted there, but that was something that I should have caught and bumped that up a few years ago. But if you see the projected expenses in this fiscal year ending in June, we're expecting to spend 880,391, we're still only budgeting 800. And part of the reason is that we're, we're hoping this $15,000 infiltration inflow improvement that Joe just outlined is going to save some of that money. And we're expecting with the new Gateway and other things coming online, that we'll have some increased revenue through flows and other things. So, that's where we got in that, in that, in that pickle, the money was borrowed from the Sewer Assessment Fund, and will have to be paid back from operations, and starting next year, we'll be on a schedule to be making those regular payments back that covered that shortfall. So, this is a problem that's being rectified, and that's how it came about, just so that everybody knows. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, I mean, the best way to describe it in a few words is it's, as far as, it's a catch-up budget to get us to where we're supposed to be, so it's a realistic budget, and then we can hammer home energy efficiencies, maintenance of our stuff, so going forward, we're going to be in a much stronger, stable position in these departments, but I don't want to have to say that the expenditure line has to go up 10.8%, but if it doesn't, it's not a realistic budget to what our operation is. So, that's where we are, spent a lot, a lot of time looking at this, dissecting it. Brad, our utility engineer, is fantastic, he, he puts his sweat and everything into, a great job, heart and soul, we're very lucky to have him. I'm trying to look at the money side of it, so he can do the, the things that he does best is run that department, so that, you know, this time next year, I can be a lot more comfortable saying that, you know, we stabilized the budget and we shouldn't have to keep doing this, we played catch-up, everything's on the table, and that's what this budget is, it's everything on the table, this is what we got, this is how much it takes to run this department.
The other part, you're going to go? Okay, are we on there, you want to just slide it down to me? Okay. Bob's got to go, it's late for schooling, is it, can he have the morning off from school tomorrow, Roseanne? Do you have that kind of?
I'm sorry, I'm not authorized.
No, you're not authorized to do that?
But if he was coming to my class.
I'm trying to get him so that he could sleep late.
If he was coming to my class, I would overlook it.
Could you just help with this?
Yeah.
Well, we're making, well, we're making a little switch, switcheroo here. I'm interested in the line delinquent interest.
Interested in what?
The line that is delinquent interest, I'd like to.
In which, in both departments?
It's in the Sewer Department budget that I'm looking at now.
I believe, not positive, but I believe that when people don't pay their sewer bills, they incur interest, and that's for delinquent payments, so that's the interest that, and it's a revenue. So, someone owes $400 and they haven't paid it, and there's an interest that goes up to makes it 500, that $100 is $100 of revenue into delinquent interest.
Thank you.
Good, any other questions?
No.
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
So, I think we're very lucky with regard to having Joe, being able to have these budget capabilities.
It's been a couple of years since we've had a good presentation of the budget, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Because we're very often asked questions and, and I know we're running very late tonight, but I have had at zoning, I was asked about for an update on the regional water interconnect, so if we can get to it.
I was going to do that as, while Joe was sitting here as part of it, because it has to do with revenues and flows. The, the water pipe is filled with water and has been leak tested, the grounds in which were disturbed have, being in the process or have been completed to be re-landscaped. The tank is completed and has 435,000 gallons of water in it, it's been tested there. The pump stations, I think, have a little bit of, of maintenance that need to be done in terms of getting ready to be startup, but they're ready to go. So, the transmission period per our contract is from September 15th, oh, sorry, from September 15th, and, thank you, Governor, September 15th to May 15th, where we transmit water from our system to New London, and then, in the summer, from May 15th to September 15th, we bring that back. Now, obviously, we're beyond that, so we're working on an MOU with New London that would allow us to move water back and forth the early part of the week, and take water back the later part of the week. We are doing that for two reasons. One, we want to get some operational practice time in, because we thought we'd be, we'd be open a little bit within our transmission period, and also, we want the ability that in the event we have an extraordinarily dry summer, we'll be able to take some excess water in our system, which we have on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, send it over and then bring it back to help offset any, any shortfalls. Now, because of the fact that that will be going and it will be operational, say it's not operational till August 1st, for example, it would still be in the next fiscal year, and it would still be probably a good way to increase revenues as flows will increase, because we won't have a lot of the requirements on conservation that we have, so we expect some of that. So, so once the MOU is done, I just have signed off on that with Brad and the attorney, and we're talking to New London about getting that, we'll start moving water back, but it should only be a few weeks before we're, we're operational on that.
Okay, thank you.
So, and that ties it with the budget, so we're hoping that that's part of the revenue required that comes in. So, thank you for staying late, I know you, you get here very early in the morning, much earlier than any of the rest of us, and this is a late night, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
But you could authorize a late arrival for him.
Yeah. You know what, he, he does, he can, he can come in when he wants, because he does such a great job, that's my opinion. That was part of my report, do you want me to continue my report, or would you like to?
I would love for you to continue.
Anybody else have any pressing reports?
No.
No, I haven't had any.
Okay. You did ask about dispatch, there are some meetings with regard to dispatch and the financial applications of implementing the dispatch coordination and regionalization between the three towns. I took over the, looking at the financial projections, and asked Anna, and I sat down, and Anna did most of the work in terms of putting the financials together, getting information from both the London and Waterford, so that we'll see what's happening. There's a meeting coming up with all of the CEOs to, to determine what the net impact is going to be on each community as we participate, I haven't, those numbers haven't been finalized yet. We're going to be talking in terms of, with all the HR directors and the union people to determine what the next steps are in terms of negotiating a contract. The House and the Senate did pass a bill that allows for municipalities, specifically our three municipalities, to provide for a governing board, which would then do the hiring and firing of employees, the, the oversight of operations, et cetera. So, if the governor signs that, that becomes law, and then, we will able to have one entity with representatives of all the three communities doing the negotiations for the Labor Attorney. So, we're still some months away, we're getting into the nitty-gritty of it, there may be some additional startup costs that we have to look and see whether the benefits are. the benefits are gonna be to all the communities and where that is. And once we get that, I, I will bring all those numbers forward for, for your consideration and if we decide to go forward, it'll be based on, uh, operational enhancement and, and the money and how that works. And so, that's kinda where we are.
Is this the only proposal that you plan to bring forward?
Well, I wanna bring this forward, uh, in its entirety, uh, because if this proposal works, then there may be a further expansion of other towns. I understand that KX is working with Montville, uh, and, you know, we, we did talk a little bit about just us going to Montville, um, and those numbers will come forward as well. So, it's, it's kind of a convoluted thing that this whole thing could end up being done, uh, as an entity and then having the other ones fold in, uh, to this, or we could go to Montville. So, there's, there's a number of things that could happen.
Uh, my concern is that certainly with the press articles that have appeared on this, it's, uh, this has been the only plan presented, as though this is the one that's going forward. And when we first began our discussions, there were several options and I would like to, uh, I'd, I'd like to see what the possibilities are for the other options.
Well, as I said, we looked at KX, we, we thought about moving forward with that. They didn't wanna wait the time that it would require for it, so they're looking into Montville. We are looking into Montville. We have a small committee to do that. And so, I'll bring you all of those things forward if you think that there are other opportunities to, to look at.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Am I still going? Um, the solar project, um, is about ready to be authorized to get turned on, uh, and CLMP will take two or three weeks to do that. There are some deliverables that have to be done up there. Interestingly, we heard about the, the potential silt that's coming out of, uh, the solar farm. Now, we sent our wetlands agent up there and as last Saturday, he reported to me, there was no evidence of any silt coming out of there. So, there's been some discrepancies as far as where the, you know, who the culprit is with regard to that. So, I have to try to find a way to figure that out. Mr. Domingo was correct in terms of the, the siting council not being any help in terms of being over, uh, having oversight. So, um, I participated in a roundtable discussion with regard to, uh, at the East Lime High School, generated by Chris Olson, who did a great job on mental health concerns, uh, and how we handle services, uh, to that segment of the community. And there were a number of people around the table and, and we're looking at coordination. Uh, I'm looking to do the same thing with, uh, drug, uh, prevention and specifically this heroin, um, epidemic that is going on throughout the country, not just in East Lime. As you know, we've had two heroin-related overdose and deaths, uh, in the past six months. Uh, so, we are gonna be doing a, a task force here on that. And tomorrow, I'm attending the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Task Force where, uh, I am part of a committee that is statewide looking at this problem. So, we're looking at different ways to connect big cities like Bridgeport, New Haven and Hartford with rural towns like East Lime, uh, Watford and Sprague and, and look at the needs that we have to, uh, address with regard to this problem and work together from the CEOs down. So, I, I attended the Citizen of the Year for the Chamber of Commerce and honored Maria Miranda, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the annual town meeting, as you know, was, uh, on the twelfth and tomorrow, uh, if this is being taped, that would be May twenty-second, uh, is the referendum on the budget and the voting will be at the community center from eight AM to eight PM. Uh, and, uh, then we'll have the budget process either completed or determined to go to the next step. Uh, I did have some CCM and COG meetings, uh, did meet with the clean energy folks. Lori Matthew from the, the Department of Health, the Connecticut Department of Health, Drinking Water Division, she's the head of that, came out and we toured, uh, the interconnection and, uh, she found that, she was very excited about that. We're continuing with negotiations with the police and fire contract. I attended a Kerma breakfast in which our public safety committee, it was honored for, for their hard work. Julie Wilson and I went out there and got a plaque, which will be hanging up in the town hall. Uh, I did attend the tea for those ninety and over, put on by the senior center and, uh, I think there were thirty-seven folks that came out, aged ninety or over, and the oldest there that day was a hundred and two. And, and we had a nice lunch provided by Bridebrook Healthcare and Lander's Fish Market. Uh, the, went to the Wyndham to have a meeting with Senator Blumenthal on behalf of the Central Rare Corridor. I have been, uh, the chairman of that since I was chairman of COG. And the Central Rare Corridor is that tr, uh, line of track from New London up to Stafford